Snow, when you're ready. We're good to go. Thank you all very much. We will call our February 27th meeting to order, and we will entertain motions.
I move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular individual and pending litigation.
Moved by Maura, seconded by Karen. Any discussion, questions, or conversation? All in favor? That is unanimous for the members who are here if you recorded that. Fantastic. All right, we will be back around 7:00 PM. Thank you, good folks. And we will continue on with our agenda. We'll make sure that they get on. Are there any modifications to the agenda?
Yes. Student reps are not listed. We're trying to, yeah, yeah.
They are, you are listed on the printout, and we will ensure that we have time for students. Hearing no other modifications, we'll continue on with our agenda and go to public comments.
And we have one person signed up for public comment, Patrick Willshire.
Wherever you feel most comfortable. There's also a microphone right there as well. Fantastic, thank you.
All right, good evening. Thank you for Patrick Willshire, I am a parent of a student at Enfield Elementary. The reason I'm here tonight is because there have been incidents of violence in my daughter's class in the past four months. And as a result of this, we escalated to various levels of the administration. That was the other day with superintendent and a principal of the school. We had met originally during sensitive violence, which specifically was my daughter of a side across the face of a foster migrant student. This these incidents of violence have persisted, not necessarily just with my daughter, but with other students in the classroom. Also involving multiple evacuations of the classroom frequently throughout the week, generating obviously a great deal of fear from my daughter and other students in the class. Incidents where the teacher has been attacked by students in the class, and my daughter and other students had to hide under their desks, run through the classroom to protect themselves from these incidents. Basically, from my perspective, this has been a failure to protect not only my daughter but the other students in the classroom. This will lead to an evacuation from the classroom, which means that they are not safe. The administration has made awareness in November. When this first occurred specifically with my daughter, obviously it's been persistent since then. And we were told yesterday in the meeting effectively that disciplinary policy is in place if this school was not called. This is the policy. It took four months for this, for any sort of meaningful escalation to occur, to try and resolve the issue. We're not given any definitive answers. Understandably, in certain circumstances, we protect the anonymity of the rights of students that are involved, but not given any concrete conclusions as to what will happen, though something amniveous is going to happen as a result of these four months of time proceeding through the disciplinary procedure. So from my perspective, the procedure needs to change. This is not adequate. Our students should not be in fear of violence daily in their classroom for four months straight when this is a known issue. It's not an unknown quantity. We know this is happening. The teacher knows it's happening. The principal knows it's happening. So there should be a better process in place to address this. I think other parts of this include adequate support systems in the school. So, Enfield Elementary does not have a full-time psychologist on staff. That seems like a great priority when we have circumstances like this where kids, there are obviously kids in the class that need additional support, not only including the people that are victimizing the other students, but the victims themselves. Also, there's been a, obviously, a direct lack of direct support staff, additional assistance in the classroom, and there's only one social worker currently employed at the school. So I think these are things that could easily be addressed by adding additional staff. That being said, I think also there is a need for more transparency, because we only found out about this as reported by our seven-year-old, for the most part. Aside from those, the individual incident where she was attacked, most of the details of this have come from our seven-year-old, other parents, as reported by their seven-and-eight-year-olds. With very little information from the school, that these evacuations were happening, how many incidents were occurring, the level of incidents, it's been normalized for our students, so they don't always come home. I don't necessarily know what to take from my seven-year-old, is serious or not serious, because throughout this whole process that we've been going through, she says it's not that big of a deal, but it obviously isn't. But for her, it's now normal.
Mr. Willshire, we're past our three minutes. Is there a summary? Just, I also want to be respectful, given the topic.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. I think that really includes what I needed to say. I think we need more support in the school, more transparency, and that these issues cannot be allowed to persist if they happen again.
And if there's a statement, please feel free to keep it with our board clerk, and it will go to all board members, including those who are not present today. Thank you for sharing. There is no one else signed up to speak. Board responses?
Thank you for having the courage to come and speak to this board about the most precious thing in your universe. Not everybody has that courage or the temperament. I will not try and defend the institution, but just to say, no one wants their child to be injured. Not even once. But we also know the complexity of the legal structures we're mandated to put around some of our babies, which we cannot talk about. And unfortunately, those structures don't lead to the conclusions we want immediately. Sometimes not at all. And then we have to make harsher decisions. I do respect the fact that our administrators and our executives and the principal of that school are some of the most caring, thoughtful, kind-hearted, loving human beings I've ever seen around kids. And I've seen the principal of that school in action, chasing a baby down and preventing them from crossing that busy road in front of the school, and bringing that child back to learning. So, there is a balance to be struck. I will end by saying I don't ever want that balance to be struck on the backs, heads, or shoulders of any of our other babies.
I'll add briefly that oftentimes in these situations, the board's response is to not offer response, given the complexity and the possibility of a violation of privacy. But without question, they continue to be in conversation with the building leader. The board is aware, and there will be a continual flow of information in multiple directions. Fantastic. It is on the agenda. We'll transition to student reps. I am not sure which one of our student reps went first last time.
Okay, so we talked with Mr. Trumbull yesterday about a few things. So we talked to him about deans and associate principals at IHS, because a lot of us were pretty unsure about what exactly like the structure is of administrators. So, we had a really great conversation about that, and also thinking about some ways to maybe brainstorm how we can kind of disseminate this information to students. And then, we also discussed the counseling system of IHS and the current system of booking meetings with counselors, and how we could potentially make it easier for students to schedule meetings with counselors less far in advance, so closer to the, to the time at which they're scheduling the meeting.
The ICSD combined band concert is next Wednesday on March 6th. The concert will be at 7:00 PM in Culp Auditorium. Bands from the middle school and Ethica High School will all be performing, so please come and support us. We were very intrigued by the discussions surrounding the seventh period schedule during the curriculum meeting. We learned many new things about the teacher perspective of the scheduling pileup. And as students, we also have a lot of feedback to say around the schedule, and would like to share some of these things. From what we've seen, students have been expressing positive feedback on the schedule. Many students are saying they really like universal lunch. However, we also have concerns such as needing to drop out of foreign language and arts classes, and uneven distribution of students in classes, and a shorter lunch period for resting. It seems like there will be more discussion about this in future meetings, so we're hoping to continue the discussion.
Hi, everyone. Sorry. So, this past weekend, our boys hockey team won their sectional. They beat Broome County by a lot, and a couple of my close acquaintances scored a bunch of goals, so we are very, very happy about that. And in other good news for all of us from the library today, they managed to secure us a unlimited New York Times subscription for all ICSD student and staff, which I think is pretty cool to not be limited to four articles a month anymore. Very, very grateful for that. So, a huge shout out and thank you to the library staff, especially Mr. Herrick.
All the news that's good to print.
Wait, I feel like I missed, how did you guys get that?
We're not sure. The library worked its magic. Mr. Herrick and Ms. Donald worked their magic. I don't, I don't know what happened, but...
Oh, okay. No, I'm glad I just did. I thought I felt like I just missed how that, how that came to be.
No, they just took a wand. They made a really nice spell. It was a difficult incantation. We're really proud of them for that. In more serious news, spring sports tryouts are coming up next week, so give Mukund and I our luck on the way to the tennis team, hopefully. So, finally, I have props, everybody. One second. We have recycling lids, finally. Many thanks to Dr. Bryman and Mr. Taylor for their help in the acquisition of these supplies. We hope to make it possibly a weekend project sometime soon for cutting holes in them, and we will get them to all the six bins that are currently around the school. And we hope to start up our pilot program in earnest. Hopefully, in the next coming months, we can collect some data to see if some of the practices which we've outlined in previous meetings, such as increased labeling and smaller holes in the tops of the bins to discourage the deposition of food remains, will help to alleviate some of the problems surrounding student contamination of the recycling bins. And we will share that data once we collect it. And we hope that this will make a positive impact on our school community. Additionally, we are looking forward to our conversation about middle school math classes with Dr. Bradwell on tomorrow. We hope it's fruitful, and as we said last week, we hope we can learn a lot from your experiences and ideas. So, thank you very much for taking the time out of your day to schedule that with us. This year's LACS trips are being finalized currently. Students have finished signing up for them, and we're currently waiting for our slots. Katrina Relief has started doing yard work again to do some fundraising, and other trips like rock climbing and Spanish trip are also continuing their fundraising.
We also have PBATS upcoming, specifically English PBATS, which, if you don't know what those are, presentation-based assessment tasks in place of regents. And those are upcoming on the 14th. Students, including myself and Odin, have submitted our papers for that and received feedback and grading on that, and look forward to giving those presentations.
Geez, the attention span on these kids. So, sixth-grade shadowing has started again. So, fifth graders from elementary schools around the districts once again have the opportunity to come and follow a sixth grader around their day at LACS and get to see our school for a day.
Infusion week is coming up quickly for us at LACS, starting February 18th. We'll be learning about consent and healthy relationships, and that's all going to be weaved in throughout our classes. At the end of the week, there's going to be a concert performed by our talented band students. I think it's centered around consent as well.
And lastly, I come bearing gifts. As the, LACS has, as the first edition of the chestnut is out. So, I didn't bring many, but if you want to like, check it out. Yeah. Well, if it was one, it would be gift. So, that is, that's all we have.
Great. Thank you. Board reps, board responses?
I'll be the first to take a copy. I'll share it with the others, too.
Additional board responses?
Go Mantaqui! Hey! How do you all plan to transmit your feedback about the high school schedule to us? I don't think I heard that. I'll talk to the, to the, to the high school, the lovely high school folks.
It was mentioned during the curriculum meeting that there would be future discussion on this, whether it was during the public voting meeting or somewhere else. So, we'd be happy to send them those, if they're prepared that way. If it would be helpful to get more of like a general consensus, then we can also like send out a survey or something like that. We don't exactly know where we're gonna like present all this information, but we were, there was, it was acknowledged that there would be more discussion, so we're just planning to participate in that.
On the topic also of sharing data, just for future reference, if we do end up gathering useful data from the recycling, would the board be all right if we put together a short presentation that we could give on that in the future, sometime in the future?
In the past, I has moved this August body to action like nothing else. We only have one request, that you work with your, with the adults around you and with administration or someone to make sure that the data you collect is, in the end, useful to us.
Additional board responses? I will follow up just by saying I am also eager to meet tomorrow, and my purpose is to learn more than anything else. So, we'll see folks tomorrow. And to folks at LACS, good luck with the PBAT process. I know this is the first of a couple that will be coming up for the next couple of months, and so, severing everyone well wishes as you go through this process. And apologies that I will not be able to participate this year, but I know other board members are...
I will be a grader, as I have been for quite a few years now.
There you go.
And I don't know, this is related to LACS, and since Claire put in a plug for herself at the, for the concert, I'll do this. Two LACS middle schoolers are participating in a quite elaborate production of Macbeth, which will be taking place in, on the weekends on March 15th, which is the Ides of March, which is a bad night to be opening a Shakespeare play, particularly the cursed play, the Scottish play. But, so it's going on that weekend and the next weekend. So, Locking Nun Makepeace is playing multiple roles, and Griffin, whose last name is escaping me, is also in Locking Nun Makepeace, or in an end I mean.
All right. Macbeth, here we come.
The Scottish play.
The Scottish play.
Well, we're not in that theater, so it's okay to say Macbeth.
If there are no other board responses, we will continue on with the agenda. Fantastic. Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda, and we will entertain motions.
Come on, Jill.
I move that we, let's see. I'll move the consent agenda. That's easy. Yeah.
Second.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Maura. Discussion, conversation, questions? There are a number of items on here. Just want to make sure everyone has had a chance to read through them.
So down, down through which item?
The consent agenda will go through all the way, 8.1.
Eight, okay.
So, in terms of the consideration of accounts, there are 12 different items. There's a personnel report, and then there's approval of the minutes. Yes, indeed. Anybody else got additional questions? Items? Hearing none? I'll also just double down on the thank you to IPEI. This is the second or third meeting in a row that we've received significant contributions for academic and co-curricular activities, and so we're greatly appreciative for all the hard work that IPEI does and provides special opportunities for students throughout the school district. And the other items are here for folks to take a look at. So, hearing no additional question of the conversation, I will call the question. All in favor? That is unanimous for the folks who are present this evening. Thank you very much. That brings us on to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Brown?
Professor, thank you for this opportunity to share, and I continue to find myself inspired to serve as superintendent, having been in classrooms today. The young people, the way in which you ask questions, and some of y'all I saw today at the table, the way in which you play, the way in which you flow, the way in which you push us, please know it was food for my soul today. Thank you for providing me that inspiration. And others who had an opportunity to be in classrooms with me, Mr. Blalock, Mr. Grant White, Dr. Grant Rice, who were there today. Thank you. I see you. And you know, I know I have the privilege and the honor to be able to go into classrooms whenever I need that inspiration, and you always have provided that for 14 school years. But I also recognize that not everybody has that privilege and that honor. So we, I want other folks to be inspired like I was today, and one way to do that is to check out the ICSD Insider. You will see artifacts, receipts, elements of the beautiful teaching and learning in which you do each and every day in our Insider. We have endeavored, thanks to our great communication team, and all the folks who submit content to this Insider. We're endeavoring to put this out quarterly, and it's connected to our ICSD Learning Forward initiatives. Students, students as learners as partners, anti-modulation curriculum, so you'll see evidence of how this is being implemented in our schools, and with a special focus on what y'all are doing. And, you know, there's, we've even, the, sitting down with Dr. Brown, I'm gonna tell y'all right now, there's no question a board member has asked me during my time as a superintendent that's any tougher than any one of the students are asking me right now, and we're capturing it on tape, all right? And it's not edited, it's just real. So I appreciate, and we are now posting them, and I have friends from other parts of the country who can't believe we're doing this, but also appreciate it at the same time. But anyway, my time tonight is just to say thank you for the inspiration, particularly for a person who's been up, Ms. Talkin and I, since 4:00 AM grappling with tough adult issues, but to see how y'all play and how y'all flow is why we do this. So thank you. Thank you, Professor.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. We will continue on with our agenda, and that brings us to agenda item 10.1, budget expenditures, tax rate, and cap options. I presume that we have Ms. Verba joining us. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Amanda Verba. I'm the Chief Operations Officer. You get to hear a lot of my voice during this season. I did come complete with some cough drops, so I apologize. I am fighting off the beautiful sharing of germs that has been happening across the district. If I have to, you know, get a cough, just please know, I don't mean to. But we are really excited, I think, tonight to just sort of share where we are at this moment in time. And as you know, this is evolving until we bring, Dr. Brown brings a budget to all of you for adoption, and that date is sort of mid to late April, right? So we have plenty of time, but this is just sort of where we are right now. And again, all of this is based on certain assumptions that we make, right? And those assumptions can evolve and change as, as we have more discussions and we bring things forward to stakeholder groups, and we get feedback on that process. So, please know again, this is just a moment in time of where we are. So, any good budget, right, has to start with revenue. We always try to remind folks where we are, and again, those assumptions that we've been discussing quite lengthily at our finance committee meetings, right? A lot of this work is happening in that, that space, and there's tremendous dialogue and feedback that's happening. So, I would always recommend for folks to tune into that finance committee. On the website, there are links there, and then you're able to sort of see what's, what's to come. At this moment in time, we've been discussing a lot about the real property tax, right, and that levy. We will, we will submit our tax levy calculation to the state by the end of this month, and then we will determine, you know, what, what, how much more we will levy based on the rate that we have been talking about currently. And the next slide shows a little bit about the history of the rate, but right now, all the revenue documents that we've been reviewing is based on locking in a predictable rate, a tax rate for voters for this year, next year, and then the following year. So this is a three-year process. We do know, and Eldred has always been wonderful about this, of, you know, reminding the community that we can never do a budget in one year only, that you really do have to look forward and know what's coming our way. This budget has to support current negotiations that we're, with bargaining units like our employee support professionals, right? That's our ESP unit for TAs and Aids, and also looking ahead to upcoming negotiations with our ITA, which is our Teachers Association, and our principals and directors. That's, that'll be next year. We're also in negotiations with substitutes this year as well. So, so we know that the revenue that we're bringing in has to support our current and future, it also supporting some of the things from our past, right? So that is also all still the lingering effects of COVID on our buildings and our supports, whether they could be for our students and our staff or our buildings, right? So, so this revenue piece here, this is sort of where we are right now. And again, this assumes that tax levy maintains last year's tax rate. As you notice, that red box, I do highlight that in a different color, because that is movable, right? If we decide that we want to not make changes to our total budget, which matches the total revenue amount right now, and we want to decrease the levy or state aid comes in lower, or we're looking at other revenue sources and that changes, that could, we could increase that, that fund balance amount and reserve amount to balance the budget. If we decide that state aid, if all of a sudden those runs come in and they're higher, that could decrease, right? Or we could decrease the tax levy and increase that. They're all, they all can move together in one slide, but that red one really is sort of what we have. I will say that this is less than what we budgeted last year. So, so when we closed the fiscal year, we allocated an amount of fund balance and reserves for this current budget that we're living in, and that number right there is reflective of something that is less than last year. We discussed a finance committee trying to slowly wean ourselves off of sort of using fund balance and reserves to balance the budget, but again, as factors change and we have more dialogue, we might use the same amount and look to another place in the revenue lines to decrease. So, just historically, again, this has been brought up at finance over and over. It's, it's our sort of history of our tax rates and our commitments to the public around trying to really decrease those. As you notice, that $16.22 is not quite our 2009, 2010 number, but definitely less than the 2010, 2011 number. So, you know, we've really tried to be thoughtful about what the, what the taxpayer sees, right, as their rate per thousand that they're paying. Again, just another way to look at the revenue, and this is specific to sort of the tax levy that we're discussing. And just, you cannot say it often enough, the difference between what a levy is and what a rate is, right? That levy is That levy is the dollar amount that we need to operate the school. And we all know that this is the largest portion of our, of our revenue source. And then the rate is what a taxpayer sees per thousand. So that's the revenue piece. Any other questions? I can go back if you need to, or I can just go on to expenditure. Expenditure, these are going to be very large buckets. And again, remember, moment in time study as of right now. The, the business office during the February break, we try to pull all of this together for all of our colleagues, all of the other budget developers, the board, to ensure that, you know, we have a document that we feel is really representative of what the operations are to move forward next year. And then to really take a look at some of the asks of all of our budget developers. You've been seeing them in the finance committee meetings as they're presenting their budgets. We know, for example, facilities presented, and that was a very large ask. We know that. And that's included in these budget numbers. And we have yet to sort of look through those and that's sort of the, the board will, you know, will give us feedback as we go forward. But that's just one example. We do know that those costs are going up, right? Gasoline, utilities, all of that, that's all increasing. Needs for equipment, that's going up. So that was one example in the budget of where, where we were. But these are just sort of those larger buckets. And then again, just showing the public, we, we really do say this over and over again. Most of our expenditures are people, are our people. We invest in our people, the salary and benefits to deliver, you know, the top line education, to deliver those experiences and those programmatic opportunities for all of our young people. And then you can see the other larger buckets of our commitment to that debt service piece of the budget is still within that seven percent. We tried to say it's going to be around seven. We're a little bit low. But Ben Maslona from Fiscal Advisors had already talked about that, that this year would have just that little bit of a dip. And then the other expenses are all of the other buckets, supplies, materials, equipment, travel, you know, other opportunities that that we have built into that budget. So we'll go just sort of in now a little bit more with specificity. And you'll start with instruction and our sort of our programs that we have. So instruction, what I do on these slides, and again, this will go on the website. All of these things, depending on the type of learner that you are, right? Sometimes you like to see the spreadsheet. Sometimes you like to see the narrative. So we try to show you this aligns with our audit report as well. And you can see sort of what we budgeted and what numbers sort of drive themselves into these lines. And so this is, this is our largest area of the budget by far. And, and you can see here, this is the commitment to instruction. And it's many elements from the teaching staff to the TAs and aides, to the principals that run the, you know, the, the buildings, instructional technology, summer schools, all of that. So that piece is, is our largest. And as expected, you know, eight to nine percent increase is, was not going to be unanticipated for sure. We know that the cost to do the work is going up. This includes obviously our bargain agreement commitments as well, salary, but also we have enhanced the number of positions that we have quite a bit over the past couple of years. So every budget document catches up with the year prior. So if there were positions that were created and they didn't show up in the budget document the year prior, they have to be caught up with for this year. So some of these increases you'll see is, is actually more staff, just chair members.
Man, a quick question. Can you, is it possible to add links to this, yet again, exceptional document, to some of the previous work that we have discussed in finance? For example, we had an amazing, we had a very informative slide during one of our presentations that showed the fact that although our student population, our census is decreasing, the amount of investment we have to make because of the issues we all know about is increasing. Is it possible just to link certain key elements to a document like this?
We can, we can do any of those things that I will look to the communications team and my other colleagues to help me with that as well. And if those are valuable, remember that we are developing the frequently asked questions section of the, the website, which really is where we drive a lot of people. So those could also be vigils. It could be, it could be a both.
All right. We're gonna make one other suggestion. Back up a little bit in revenue, the column table where we have the tax rate. And we have school year. Yes, that one. Can we squeeze another column in there for the actual budget increase year over year? Right? I think it would be critical for people to see it in one space, right? You know, one hundred fifty sounds like a big number. But going back to my time on the board, it's been relatively consistently manageable, right? Two, three percent. And then obviously the years where we had to exceed that. And this is one of those years where it looks like all the individual increases are substantial. We might need to have a conversation about that, right, in public, that the world has changed, right? Especially the US labor market, all of the variables have changed because of the endeavor. We have reset the cost of doing business in the United States. And this is just a reflection of that. So if you see two, three, 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 and then, you know, this year you see six or seven, there's a rational explanation. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Right. When I first started, it was a two percent line. That was the, that was the language that was used. It is no longer that. So look away if you get nauseous. I don't want to go too fast through this one. So this was instruction. Employee benefits, again, that largest piece of the pie, right? This is, this goes along with that hand in hand. Many of our benefits, they are based on a percentage of salary. Many of our benefits, they're standalone, like health insurance, vision and dental. There's actually a, a fee, right, versus a percentage of someone's salary. So um right now, this is what we're thinking this is increasing. Some of the line items were over budgeted or under budgeted last year, right? Our health insurance line was pretty healthy. We're also going to use some health insurance reserve money. So you'll see, we're trying to kind of help those costs not go up in the budget by using the reserves to support that as well.
It's funny looking at this one. To see the change is five point five percent. Who's been here long enough on the board to remember that budget item was fourteen, fifteen, sixteen percent until we went to a self-insured model?
Well, right. And health insurance is one of the pieces here. ERS and TRS is also another piece. We use reserves for those as well. So Eldred, to your point, we've been able to sort of buffer some of those peaks and valleys by allocating reserve funds because we've grown those, right? And so, so that really helps lead to that predictability of those budget lines. But also, I mean, we are very honest and we talk about it at Finance Committee. These are the budget lines where we do build in cushions because next year could change. And you don't want that spike, right? Because you're going to have to take it from somewhere else. So we really do try to, to keep that pretty consistent over the course of time. Transportation, they presented a couple of months ago, I think they, they kicked off the budget cycle of twenty twenty-four in January. And this does not include our referend, our proposition number two, right? For electric buses and propane buses and vans. Bob will talk about that in a little bit. That's a separate part of the ask at the annual meeting when the voters go and they vote on the school budget. This is actually in the general fund, the amount of money that's in the general fund to support the transportation operations. And again, we all know these costs are growing up. Operations and maintenance, that was at the February Finance Committee meeting. Overall, there were new staff that were added, but all from last year to this year. But also, again, we talked a lot about sort of the needs of moving that department forward with some of the technology around cleaning and maintenance. And so Heather, if you have any questions about that, that, that video is on the website and you can take a look at that. And we'll have links to that as well, Eldred, so I can put those in to these slides. Our debt service, we had a conversation about that in twenty twenty-three as part of sort of our planning for the Capital Project twenty twenty-four. So this was predictable and that was aligned with all of the slides that Ben Maslona from Fiscal Advisors had shared. BOCs we had presented to our board last time. Mainly, they spoke about the administration budget, right, and some of our program budgets. But this is not just TST BOCs, but BOCs services that we also cross contract for, right? So we cross contract with OACM and City BOCs. And there's, you know, other BOCs that we utilize depending on the service that they provide. So, so this would be the comprehensive BOCs budget. Mainly, the drivers are special education and technology right behind these. So there's also a lot of other services like professional development, but those are the biggest portions of the BOCs budget, along with the administration budget as well. Uh pre-K and food service are their own budgets, but in the general fund budget, there are two elements of the budget that support pre-K and food service through what's called inter-fund transfers, which means you budget in the general fund and then it gets transferred into those appropriate budgets. The pre-K program has been receiving really great grants. Actually, they've been going up. So we've actually held that flat. The food service area, you know, as those costs go up and the EA contract was negotiated and settled, this is going to support them for their benefits line to make sure that they could, they're whole. If they don't need it, we don't transfer it, right? And if they do, we transfer it over. So, so that's budgeted there to support the, the pre-K and food services program. And then administration is essentially all of sort of the functions that make the school a business, really, right? The human resources side, the business services side, office of the superintendent, all the insurances, the legal communications. Remember that we have, oh my goodness, I think we're upwards of fourteen hundred employees now. And remember that we have, right, a million square feet of instructional space. So this is a very large organization and it takes administration funds to be able to support that operations. So that's this area of the budget. And they just keep getting added to.
Amanda, for the slider on administration, it says, you know, business and HR resources, that, does that also include all the folks who are in those offices as well?
That is correct. So for example, in the business office, right, there's myself and Sydney Wade, and then there's Marta Costa Pata. That's the one office. We have then the satellite office, which is payroll, purchasing, accounts payable, treasurer, employee benefits, right? Like the list goes on and on and on. Um, so that's just the, all the folks that would fall under that to make that, that magic happen are in those lines. All of, all of the HR team is in, are in these lines. So, so that, that's what you're going to be seeing here. And then finally, I'm so glad the cursor is where it is. Board of Education members are not included in this line item because I don't know if you all know this, but you're volunteers. And you do not receive a salary.
Are we getting the thirteen percent increase on that?
So Derek, I always, as my joke, right, any number times zero is still zero. Right? So this is the, the Board of Education, the clerks' salaries and the cost to do elections. We have polling locations all over our community. We have to pay for staff to, to, you know, supply the workforce for those for our day. We have to do all the printing. We have to do all of the mailing. We have to do all of the advertising around that. So that is included in this cost. So just so you are aware, also, board members have to be members of, you know, associations and you have to go to conferences and you're required when you're new to go and learn and, and, and actually get, receive training and you have to travel there. So that's included in that. Those pieces are included. But no, there are no salaries except for the folks that support the amazing operations. And what you see on YouTube, it doesn't just happen, right, with magic. These are people that are doing that. So that's who supported in these budget lines.
Maybe I didn't get paid to take Stella, her wonderful LSIS crew down to Brooklyn to see a Jay-Z exhibit?
Zero.
No compensation.
Number times zero is zero. That's right. That's right. And then just again, just to summarize, some of the, the BOCs is in the instruction pieces. We've tried to pull out those BOCs pieces. They may be there. So if you try to add up all the numbers, it may not always match up. But we will have probably by the next meeting, what you're very familiar with, which is sort of more of that Excel spreadsheet or Google Sheet style, where you can see these broken down even further. And then within each of those buckets, you'll see salary, instructional salary, non-instructional salary, supplies and materials, equipment, travel, contractual BOCs. And so within each of those categories, you'll see that breakdown and then you'll see sort of the changes moving forward. So that's what we have for today.
Questions, board members? Comments?
Man, I'm gonna find some time to sit down with you and our wonderful communication staff and make some suggestions for what we could insert. This is it. I don't think you've ever, you've outdone yourself. One more time. Dr. Brown, take a bow.
Additional questions, comments before? So just a reminder that this is an ongoing process. We're providing information. Folks should check the website. Folks should definitely attend Finance Committee. As we know, we say it all the time, you know, it's, it's a multi-year-long process. I used to say it's a year-long process. And so we are actively encouraging folks to give us feedback and participate as the budget gets built. And the board will be adopting a budget sometime, I want to say the next month or month, six weeks, right, mid-April. Yep. Fantastic. All right. If no other comments, thank you very much, Ms. Verba. Greatly appreciate it. It will bring us to agenda item ten point two, which is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Despite what it may say on our paper, we are already beginning a preview of next year's academic calendar, not this year's academic calendar. So is that you, Ms. Talkin? Fantastic.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I have the privilege of serving as the Deputy Superintendent and my name's Lily Talkin. So I am here to chat about next year's academic calendar. I know I've been addressing the community since, I believe, December about this year's academic calendar for some adjustments, given feedback from educators and caregivers regarding caregiver conference days. And so I realized this is a very quick shift then to thinking about next year. So I would say probably in about November, is that right, Catherine? We started talking, we started talking about the academic calendar for the, for the next academic year. So that's usually around when we start planning. And typically the process is, you know, we go through, obviously, the NICE ed or New York State Education Department regulations around the number of minutes and the number of days, right? And then we utilize all of the contractual agreements with all of the bargaining units. We also take a look, of course, at the Tompkins, Seneca, Tioga BOCs calendar and what they have recommended because we have a number of students for whom BOCs is either a par, partial day experience for them or a full day experience for them. And then we communicate back and forth with, with our union leaders. And we do a lot of it asynchronously. Sometimes we will hop on a call or have conversations as well because we want to make sure we're as collaborative as possible. And so we have just a giant email thread back and forth. And the wonderful Lynn Klankowski and Emily Tracy Arm are also a part of it because they help us make sure that we're staying really organized and following all the rules. So then typically what happens is we come here and we say, hi, here's what we have. Here's this draft that has seen so many iterations and comments, et cetera, right? And we ask you all for some feedback and conversation. And then we post it on our website for a period of time and gather typically a great deal of feedback from caregivers, community members, students, staff and others. I will also say that typically our union leaders will share drafts for feedback with their unit membership too. So we've already tried to gather a lot of staff input as well. And then in the next few weeks and months, we have more discussion, make adjustments. And then in the next few weeks and months, we have more discussion, make adjustments, and then bring it back for a vote.
Thank you greatly, board member. Any, any questions, comments?
In December, so there is a caregiver conference day, and it's all of the schools, or at least part of the day. Now, is that what's been, the Boynton, the Whit one, which has started last year?
Started this year.
This year.
This academic year.
Yeah, this academic. It, a half day?
Yep, it began as a half day.
Correct.
Yep.
And then we made a modification and added IHS.
We, yes, and we ultimately determined that for March fourteenth, it could be a full day for, sorry, for IHS, Boynton and Duitt. So it's a full day that you, that you voted on at the last meeting also for IHS. So this year, there's a fabulous state mandate that we have Lunar New Year off, so that's an additional day off. And because we are, we really welcome opportunities for inclusion in our calendar, right? Our students really inspired that several years back. It just changes, it, you know, breaks and different days off, right? Just sort of change the number of minutes and days requirements. So that's why you see half-days.
There's two half-days.
Right, for secondary.
Additional questions, comments? With the noted understanding that this will be posted soon on the ICSD library, I imagine our communication team will also push it out to ask for feedback, to use the Let's Talk portal, to talk to building leaders, talk to central administration, talk to school board members. I'm also reminded, I know I can already anticipate some of the feedback we're going to get, and I'm greatly appreciative of it, especially understanding that you have two major employers who do not have schedules that align or calendars or academic calendars that align. With that being said, I will repeat something that I've heard Dr. Brown say. If someone could show us a perfect calendar, please do, especially giving all the mandates. But this is the extremely hard work of a number of folks trying to put their best thinking together about how to put together a schedule for a fairly large organization with multiple competing interests at times. So please do take a look, and I'm also very appreciative of our students for the past couple of years of pushing us to be much more inclusive. It's always impressive to see this calendar, especially as I do work with other districts and look at the way in which their calendars are organized, and nothing about those districts, just, we have a really, we're doing a nice job here, even if it doesn't meet everyone's needs at all point in time. So thank you for that and for the folks who worked on it. Yes, Karen?
So we no longer have snow days on our calendar. Is there a reason why? Or can we explain for the public to understand?
First of all, I want to go on record to say I'm part of the snow day movement. I believe in snow days. So we'll, we'll just go there. So with that caveat, Dr. Brown, how are you going to respond?
He has no comment. Karen brings up a really excellent point. So we used to have, you'd often see in our previous academic calendars, probably three-ish years ago, that the Friday before the Memorial Day break would have a caveat. It would be off. However, it would not be if there were, you know, a certain number of snow days, right? Because we've made this shift to a more inclusive calendar, we don't add that extra day. We thought for a moment, actually, we could, I think, in there. But the, but realized we couldn't for this upcoming calendar. So we do have a small cushion that we build in every year. And I would actually have to look at a different spreadsheet to determine whether it's two or three that are built in.
Well, it says total staff days are a hundred and eighty-seven. There are a number, how many conference days that are?
Yeah, so there are, you'll see at the beginning of the school year, there are some, there are a number of conference days, right, that are beginning in, in late August. In New York State, we can't start school for students until after Labor Day due to legislation, unless we request and are granted a waiver by the governor. So, and we are allowed to utilize, oh my goodness, I, I want to say it's two, but I'll get that to you, two conference days to count as student contact days because the state recognizes the importance of, you know, staff collaboration.
Just a quick response to Karen's question as well and to our students about the way in which I had to use math in our own home, why my grandchild cannot go sledding all the time. And that my understanding is we've had less than twenty inches of snow this year while we average close to sixty-eight inches of snow. Let's hope that's an anomaly in some regards, but it is a very interesting trend that we're, I'm sure, all paying attention to. So that may also change the way in which snow days may or may not happen. We may or may not have snow. So, and I also was reading a number of other places that are north of us who've had to change and cancel long-term festivals, dog sled races, you name it, because they are not able to hold those events. Just a quick caveat, I was thinking about more snow days and hoping for more snow days. Dr. Brown?
I think another factor that has impacted the last few years is when the district had instituted delays, two-hour delays. In fact, when I was working, we never had delays. It was either you call a snow day at five in the morning based on forecasts and observed conditions. So with the delays, you can still get a day in there because conditions while, you know, ten in the morning or nine in the morning may allow for buses to get out there for students.
And then maybe one quick caveat. This may sort of go in line with what Mr. Harris was talking about. We've asked Dr. Brown to address snow days multiple times throughout the tenure, and I'm certain we can find the communications, the videos for folks to get an understanding about how snow days and how those decisions are made. It's, I, I, I feel for folks who are up at three o'clock in the morning on the phone with various folks, but it may be important, again, to remind our community about how those decisions are. We could find a way to probably attach it to the, to the calendar as well. You're reading no other comment. This was just a discussion item. Again, please be on the lookout. More information will come. Thank you very much, Ms. Talke, and for other folks who helped with this work. The next agenda is Agenda Item ten point three. It's Capital Project twenty twenty-four resolutions. And Ms. Verbal will be joining us.
So I will be joined by our fantastic colleague Kate Reed, since these are very legalese resolutions. Kate, thank you so much for joining us, and I'm really glad that you mentioned snow days. I'd like sort, sort of let me just say why we're doing this tonight. Last year, we had, I think there were like three total meetings where we were able to talk about the budget due to the snow days and how they felt. And so this year, we're trying to really give opportunities to talk about these things early in case there are snow days, because we will get so crunched with all of the things that are happening. This is not, this is about the Capital Project twenty twenty-four. If you are curious about that, at the Facilities Committee meeting, we have been spending tremendous amounts of time talking about it. We actually had an amazing conversation about the communication plan and all the ways that we're going to get information out. So I would highly recommend tuning into that. Kate is going to talk about sort of the legal side of that capital project. Same thing that we went through in twenty nineteen, but in twenty twenty-four, and how this will then get incorporated into our legal notice requirements for the budget as well. So Kate, you want to talk us through those four different resolutions that are attachments to the board's office? Thanks.
Sure. Thank you so much for having me tonight, Amanda and board members. I will be as brief as possible, because I know you have a lot on your agenda tonight. But we wanted to give you a heads up about some, some agenda items and resolutions that you will be seeing at the March twelfth meeting optimally, potentially March twenty-sixth, depending on, you know, some timing issues, but we're shooting for March twelfth to present four resolutions to you that would authorize essentially the placement of your capital proposition on this year's election ballot so that your voters can vote for the twenty twenty-four capital project. And, you know, one of the questions that usually comes up is why do we have four resolutions to do one thing, Kate? And that's what I was hoping I could address tonight, just to let you guys know what to expect on the agenda on each of these items. So the first item you're going to be seeing is a environmental resolution under the State Environmental Quality Assurance Act. My partner, my law partner Kathy Bennett, is taking the lead on preparing that. She's one of our environmental law experts. That is required because every time the board undertakes capital work, you must comply with the State Environmental Protection Act by engaging in a seeker process and passing a seeker resolution. So that's a, a compliance and mandate issue. The second item you're going to be seeing is the resolution of necessity. That is essentially a resolution passed by the board that says that you have a need to undertake capital work. It is a requirement that is unique to small city school districts. Other districts do not have to comply with this requirement, but because there's some differences in the way that you guys bond as a small city school district, that's necessary. It will be your bond counsel, Douglas Goodfriend, who will be taking the lead on preparing that resolution as well. You will also see a bond resolution, which will also be Doug's domain as well. That essentially allows you to public, to enter into a bonding process and to issue bonds for your capital project. It's required to be a standalone resolution. And then finally, you'll have a resolution calling the annual meeting. I myself will be taking the lead on preparing that resolution. Essentially, before the board can call its annual election, you're required to pass a resolution identifying which items will be under consideration at that election. So this is, again, it's a mandate. It's something we do every year. It's required to be completed prior to the election and at least forty-five days prior to the election so that the board can comply with publishing four installments of its annual legal notice, which will incorporate much of the information from that resolution that calls the annual meeting. So we're looking at this point that we're going to have two propositions in that resolution. We're going to notice to the public that we will be looking to expend funds from our capital reserve fund in order to purchase some transportation equipment. And then also, of course, your proposal, your, your proposition to authorize the capital improvements that are the subject of all those other resolutions. So you'll see that language. You'll see language about the board candidates and the election process. A new mandate this year is the requirement for early voting, early mail-in voting. So you'll see some new language around that. And, and that's basically, that's the whole, that's the whole show. So expect to see those four resolutions by March twelfth, hopefully for action, unless, like Amanda said, snow days certainly can derail our plans and the best-laid plans. But we will be shooting for March twelfth to have each of those compliance-related items in front of the board for action. Are there any questions?
Yes, and thank you very much, Kate. And all of the documents it states, Ithaca, City, School Districts of Ithaca, Tompkins and Tioga. Will we be signing the document that says all three of those are, all of our schools are covered through those areas?
Those are, that's actually our tax base, right? So we actually have, our tax base extends to those areas as well. And that's because it's actually, it's a fun fact to law nerds like me. But the reason for that is because Ithaca is actually classified as what's called an enlarged small city school district, which means your boundaries are not coterminous with your city limits. Your district encompasses surrounding villages and towns beyond the city of Ithaca. Not all city school districts are organized that way. It's one of the fun, unique things about Ithaca.
Tell us more, Kate. No, I'm just messing around. Thank you.
I won't bore you. You need to move on with your meeting.
No, 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 that's exceptionally important for us to understand that we have a wide range of, of a catchment area. Yes.
I have a question. So Kate, I've been involved in a lot of seekers through a planning board, and there's usually a lead agency that then evaluates the seeker. But what is the lead agency? Is the district itself the lead agency?
So in this situation, we are the lead agency under seeker because we are the only agency undertaking the capital work. I'll give you an example of, of a situation where that wouldn't be the case, just to illustrate the difference. We have, we often enter into capital arrangements with the city of Ithaca, where, for instance, the city of Ithaca will agree to do sidewalk work on our property or will give them an easement or something like that. In that situation, because there are two seeker governed entities involved in the process, there's a requirement that one agency declare itself the lead agency. So that's why that would be significant when there's two public entities doing a project together. In this particular case, as a matter of compliance, we usually identify Ithaca City Schools as the lead agency as well, but it's kind of just a formality because there isn't any other public agency involved in that process.
And then will we have to issue negative declaration?
You will, in all likelihood, not, because we're anticipating that this is actually going to be a type-two action, which does not require the issuance of a negative declaration. And in fact, fun, fun fact, under the law, seeker doesn't even technically require a resolution when the board determines that an action is a type-two action. However, SED has that expectation through facilities planning. So we've, our, our typical practice in our firm, and I take my lead from my environmental colleagues on this, is to always have the resolution just for the file, so SED knows that all the boxes were checked and the i's dotted and the t's crossed. That's a wonderful question, though, about lead agency.
Okay, thank you.
I have a very minor technical question, Kate. So in the, the letter from Douglas Goodfriend, it says that, that, so there needs to be, for resolution of necessity, the resolution must be adopted by an affirmative vote of a majority of the total voting strength of the Board of Education. And then the bond resolution must be adopted by the affirmative vote of not less than three fifths of the total voting strength. What is the difference between the majority and three fifths?
That's, that's, you know, I would actually defer to Doug on that because he's the bigger, he's the expert on the bond resolutions. I understand, though, my understanding generally is that that's driven by statute, that the education law has different majority requirements for certain types of votes, and bonding is one of those areas where there is a requirement of essentially a, a supermajority. And the reason why Douglas, like, I'm speculating a little bit, but I, I, if I get in his head, I believe the reason that he specified the total voting membership is because sometimes when boards don't have all seats filled, there's confusion about whether a quorum is the remaining members versus the whole full board. And he's clarifying, as Douglas is extremely thorough, I have immense respect for him, incidentally, but he is clarifying that it has to be your overall membership. It has to be that majority of your overall membership.
Additional questions? Kate, thank you greatly for being with us this evening. We greatly appreciate it. And to fellow board colleagues, there's a reason why we put this on as a discussion item, to provide opportunity to review it, to understand exactly what we're voting on. We're doing our best to try to give as much lead time, as Amanda said, to make sure we can anticipate in case there is a snow day, but that we're not sort of forced to make an immediate vote, so we have some time to consider. And I would remind folks that this is a conversation that we had also in December, and we've been having at a couple of finance and facilities committees. So this is not the first time that folks are seeing, it's the first time folks are seeing these documents, not the first time folks have been involved in this conversation or this process. So no further conversation. Moving on to the next agenda item, which I imagine is very similar to the, the conversation we just had, but it will bring us to...
And thanks, folks. If you don't need anything further from me, I'll sign off and go into my other board meeting I was attending. So have a great night.
We'll see you soon, Kate, I'm sure. It's Agenda Item ten point four, and this is the Capital Reserve Proposition Two language. And this is also a relative, well, this is not also, this is sort of an annual resolution language that we put on our upcoming election and vote. So, Mr. Van Kuren, good to see you.
Good to see everybody. Good evening. Yeah, this is, this is the proposition number two. I think it's going to go up on the screens here in a second. What's on your screens, not on the big screen, but it is, you know, ICSD continues to lead the region and perhaps even the state on embracing green technology and decarbonizing our school bus fleet. So this is authorizing an additional purchase of up to four electric buses under next year's budget. The technology is increasing year to year, so this might be the last proposition where we'll actually have to ask to purchase four additional low, ultra-low emission propane buses. We've already moved away from diesel and gas, but given the battery technology and the necessity... We've already moved away from diesel and gas, but given the battery technology and the necessity on some buses for longer periods of time where the doors are open, and also for longer trips, we do need to buy four more ultra-low emission propane buses. And then six passenger vehicles. We're continuing to look at hybrids. They're not necessarily what we need right now in terms of what what's offered on the market, but we'll continue to to look and make sure if there are hybrids available, that's what we'll purchase.
Questions from board members about Proposition Number Two? Joe, please.
The six passenger vehicles is, how does that relate to what we currently have? Other than, at one time, there were virtually no passenger vehicles other than the buses in the district. I noticed we seem to have a number of them now. So how many do we have currently? How many will we be replacing?
Well, the six that we have now at Transportation that were purchased last year have now run through the reimbursement protocols, so they'll be transferred over into facilities and maintenance vehicles, and then Transportation will buy six more for their needs. And the smaller buses, the smaller yellow buses are no longer purchasing those. They're not, they're not holding up to what we need. So those will be moved out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
So can can you speak to the, or somebody from Finance, maybe, speak to the process by which these particulars were determined that we need this number of buses, we need this number of passenger vehicles, we need this number of multiple.
Well, what's, yeah, what's driving the bus purchases is obviously there's useful life of the buses. So we have 88 buses. We've typically replaced roughly 10 a year. Sometimes that's been a little more, but a little less, depending on how they're holding up, the undercarriages especially. I like to remind folks, the board, previous boards have invested in paving the transportation facility. It used to be essentially gravel. So when the buses were parked on there, the the water and moisture from the ground just seeped back up and and hit the undercarriage of the buses. That investment has really started to pay off, so we're able to get a few more years out of our out of our buses. And we're hoping, you know, if the taxpayers pass on building a new transportation center, it will have a wash-through bay, which will really help extend the life of our buses. Where it used to be eight to 10 years, we're now 10 to 12 years. I'm hoping that we can get maybe 15 years out of buses moving forward.
A quick follow-up to, oh, sorry, please go ahead. Someone else had a question.
Is it salt? I mean, it's
Salt, salt, yeah. Salt's rough, yeah. But with, you know, if we have that, if we have that drive-through wash bay, that could really be helpful.
You could like take a bus every day when it comes back?
Yeah, yeah, you know, if not every day, then, you know, multiple times a week, just run it through.
And to the point earlier, as well earlier, especially giving some of the shortage, both regionally, statewide, and nationally with bus drivers, and the conversation about bus routes and bus timing. Are we transporting students on the smaller six-pack? If we're not using the smaller buses, are we using the smaller vans to be transporting students to and from school if need be, or instruction?
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, there's been an uptick in McKinney-Vento students who are displaced from homes that we utilize a lot of the the vans for.
And I know that we do not have our LACS reps here, but I just wanted to be known that in the proposition, there is discussion about buying passenger vans for the possible inclusion of driver ed, if we can do some other things to figure that out, but want to make sure that's identified clearly. Additional questions, comments? Hearing the, and again, this is a discussion item. Both of these items will come back to the board for action and a vote in the near future. If there are questions, please do reach out, and we will proceed from there. If there are no other items, no other business, then we will bring tonight's meeting to a close.
Can I just say something about the upcoming committee meetings? Next Tuesday, I believe we have, those of us involved have come to the consensus that because our policy work sessions have been, we have covered our agenda in about an hour, that the consensus is that instead of having people waiting around between policy and human resources, that we'll start human resources at six.
So I no longer in the chair of policy, and you all work more efficiently. Noted.
No, they're certainly
Take it personally.
Technology things that have helped us.
Fantastic. Thank you. We'll make sure we push that out with a communication as well. All right, good folks. Have a good evening. Thank you very much.